Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision 2016 Candidate Spotlight. I'm sitting down with Dick Swanson, who's running for reelection for the Blaine City Council in Ward 1. Dick, thank you for being here today. And I just first want to ask you, tell me a little bit about yourself, reintroduce yourself to the voters a little bit, and then tell us, why are you running for reelection?
Okay. Okay, well, first of all, my name is Dick Swanson. I'm a six-term councilman in Blaine. I've lived in Blaine since 1983. I've moved into a townhouse, then my wife and I built a big house, and now I'm back in a townhouse, so I'm kind of following the whole cycle of life through here. I'm on the council, I'm on many committees, I'm on the North Metro TV, I've been chair and vice chair, I'm treasurer of the tourism board, I'm on the senior advisory committee, I used to be on the firefighter's relief board, but that no longer exists, the state has taken that function over, which is where it belonged all along. And I'm also president, past president, vice president of the 35W Coalition, which is probably in some ways one of the most important thing that I'm on. It's a group that's working to improve transit and add additional lanes onto the 35W from Highway 36 up to Lina Lakes. And that's one of the big reasons why I'm running for reelection, where I've put 20 years on the council and trying to get that project going. And we're to the point now where with a little luck, we'll actually have groundbreaking in the next four to five years. And I would like to be on the council when that first bulldozer actually tears the concrete up. So that would be a kind of a fitting end to my career. And it's because we're almost done doesn't mean we have all the money. We can lose it. In my time as finance director at MINDAT, I've seen many projects at this point and then hit a problem and lose the funding, which is why I'm working as hard as I can with legislators, congresspeople, and MINDAT to make certain that that doesn't happen to this project.
That's one goal that you just mentioned, something you want to continue to work on. What else do you want to, what are other goals that you have if you're reelected? Things you want to get done in the next four years?
Okay, one of the major roles, goals for the first ward, I don't know if you know, but we got this huge vacant big box called Kmart sitting over on University Avenue. The city owns land around it, we own where the old gas station was, we own where the old music store was, we own the old Frank site, so that area is a huge piece of land ready for redevelopment, the first ward. And that's something that we have to do right. We're only going to get one chance, and that's a major, major effort, and it can impact the first ward and the whole city if that's done right or not. And there's a little fallout in that the old fleet, Rainbow site, nobody's going to look at the Rainbow site until they know what's happening with the Kmart site. Because in some ways, the two sites are competing with each other, and nobody's going to put the money into Rainbow until they know what's happening at the Kmart.
Another thing that is on the docket potentially for this November is the community center in Blaine.
Yeah, right.
What are your thoughts on the community center? Is it time for a community center in Blaine? Do you support the initiatives, or does still more work need to be done to see what it's going to look like?
The council has made a decision that we're not going to be involved in the community center very deeply. The one that we tried before that, the voters rejected out of hand, was more of a council-directed activity. This time, we're turning it more over to the citizens, the athletic community, and the voters are going to decide if they want one or not. I think that the dollar value is coming in at a reasonable amount for the scope of the building. The one thing we have to remember is, community centers may pay for their capital, they do not pay for their operating costs. So it will be an additional tax drain on the city. But the way we're setting up the referendum, if the community wants it, it'll be over and above our normal operating budgets, and we're setting it up that it'll be well-funded.
How do you work to be in communication with your constituents? How do you, you know, one of the big things in cities is people want to be able to talk to their city council members. How do you work on communication between you and your constituents?
Over the years, we've tried a lot of different things. For when, at one point, we tried having neighborhood meetings, and in the beginning, they were well-attended, but then they tended to stop having anybody show up. It's a little embarrassing when your two councilmen show up and city staff and one resident, so we've kind of eliminated those. Right now, the main way is through cable, through newsletters, through walking around the community, talking to people, and of course, the emails. A lot of things come through the emails. And it's amazing how many people actually watch us on cable TV. I figure probably a little more than half the city takes cable TV, and probably 40% to 50% of those watch us on cable TV. So it's, a lot of people know what's going on, and believe me, they are more than willing to send me emails telling what their opinions are.
If you're reelected, how will you work to represent your whole ward, and you know, not just the people that elected you, but everyone in the ward? How will you kind of work to bring unity? I mean, there's so many different people running for these four seats that are up on the council right now, including the mayor's seat. There's a lot of different ideas. After this is all over, if you're reelected, how will you work to kind of unify the city together?
Well, first of all, the first ward is the oldest ward in the average age, and it's composed of neighborhoods. There's quite a bit of difference between the people on the east side over by Sunset and the people living in the St. Tim's, Christ Lutheran area. They live in different cities, really. So what the council has to be is to recognize that different items are important to different parts of the city. And to unify, the one thing you have to remember is, no one councilman can do anything alone. It takes four of us in agreement to accomplish anything. So a good part of representing the city is working with the council and getting a consensus of what's really needed. And a good example of that is the fact that we're just adding two new police officers for traffic enforcement. It became very evident that the whole city is undergoing a major traffic problem with speeding and other things going on. So the council came together and decided to add a traffic enforcement unit.
As you kind of look bigger, as far as, you know, Blaine's been growing, 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 not showing any signs of that slowing down, what is important for you in that future growth? Are there, I mean, I know you can't pick and choose the growth that comes your way, but if you could, what's important to you for the next phase of Blaine's growth?
Well, one thing we need is, we need more good jobs. We also could use another good hotel. We need some, we've got two market rate apartment buildings under construction right now. We could really use a third market rate. And when I say market rate, that means we're not subsidizing, they're not low-income, they're designed for the average person to actually come in and buy. And the reason Blaine needs apartment complexes is, right now, there are a lot of people in their twenties and even up to thirties who know the job they have is not going to be their permanent job. They're probably going to make two or three or more employment transactions during the course of their life, and they're not ready to buy a house, but they want to have a decent, good place to live. And right now, Blaine is weak in that area, which is why we need the apartment complex. It's one thing we have to be careful of, though, that we don't let huge apartment complex areas of the city develop. We need them, but we need them spread out throughout the whole city, so you don't get a revolving door kind of thing between, like some of our neighboring cities have going on. The other thing that we really need, particularly in the first ward, is some good market rate over 55-only living areas. And that's one of the things I hope maybe we'll be able to pull off in the Kmart area. If you go down to Ridgefield, Bloomington, some of St. Louis Park, you see areas where you got the over 55 apartment complexes with small retail under it, and that's, and of course, the last thing that the people really want is a high-grade grocery store. And we're working on that, but that's way outside of our ability to make happen. But we keep trying. There's a couple of things maybe happening, but we don't know at this point.
We just have a little bit of time left, but I just want to finish up just kind of that quick stump speech. Why should someone vote for you?
I think someone should vote for me because most people are happy with the way city of Blaine is. I've worked hard to make city of Blaine a good city to live in, and if you're happy with the city, you should vote for me. If you don't like the city, then I should be blamed and get rid of me.
Well, Dick, thank you for coming in today, and thank you for sharing some of your views with us. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
And I want to remind you that you can head to northmetrotv.com for our complete local decision coverage. On there, we have candidate biographies. You can watch this spotlight again if you missed a portion of it, or any of the other spotlights we're taping with the primary candidates this collection season. And then remember, we'll also have all the election results on there, and also you can follow us on our social media channels for those as well. I've been your host, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching. Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision 2016 Candidate Spotlight. I'm sitting down with John Wilcox, who's running in Ward 1 for the Blaine City Council. You're running in the August 9th primary. And John, thanks for being here today, first of all.
Oh, very welcome. Thanks for having me.
And I just want to start today giving you a chance to introduce yourself to our viewers and the voters, and then explain to us why you decided to run for this office.
Sure. Sounds great. John Wilcox, I am 42 years old, graduate from Totino Grace High School, married, have been married for 19 years. I have two children, I have a 15-year-old daughter and a 12-year-old son. We've lived in Blaine for 17 years, we've built a home, so Blaine's our home and has been, like I said, for the past 17 years. I'm a 20-year employee for the city of Minneapolis. I'm a water treatment operator, so I've worked in the city for 20 years, and it's been really good to me.
All right. Tell us what, if you're fortunate enough to get elected, what do you hope to accomplish? What are goals that you have, ideas that you have, things you want to bring to the table at the city council?
Well, as a 20-year employee for a municipality, city services are big. Working in the city of Minneapolis, I've seen city services side, so that's very important to me because I've made my career out of it. I also want to continue to have us be fiscally responsible for the decisions that financially affect our residents. Basically, we are hired, if I have the opportunity to be hired by the residents of Ward 1, I work for them, so can't lose sight that it's their voice that you represent. So that's one big thing that I will bring to the city if I'm given the opportunity.
Okay. Is there a most important issue for the city of Blaine right now? Is there something that, when you look at the city, that you say, that's the most important thing facing the city this year, in the next five years, whatever it might be?
Public safety is a big issue. We had our issues in Blaine. We just want to make sure that our residents are safe, in an environment that they feel safe, that our public safety has given the resources to do the job that they need to do for the city. We want to turn on our faucet and have clean water. We want our streets safe and clean. So basically, the city service side is something, like I said before, is something that is real dear to me.
As you look at the growth that Blaine has seen over the last several years, and is going to continue to see into the future, what are your thoughts on the growth of Blaine? And then, looking forward, what are growth patterns that you would like to see the city take, whether it be in commercial area or in residential area? How do you hope that the growth continues in the city?
We want to make sure that the city prospers like it has in the past. As far as the growth, we want to make sure we keep Blaine a place that people want to call home, whether that be the average homeowner, big business, small business, anybody that wants to come to Blaine. We want to have an inviting environment for growth. We want to keep our tax base as low as possible, so that we don't cut into our services that our residents should expect.
Are there businesses you would like to see come to this city?
I'm a coffee guy, so more coffee houses for me. Actually, any business that would make Blaine unique would be a business that I would encourage to have within our city. It would be more that the residents could utilize, and this is such a community-driven city, that it's nice to have the variety of any type of business come to our city.
What is the message that you are, you know, bringing to residents when you knock on doors or when you talk to them? What are you telling them about yourself and what you hope to do for them?
My big slogan is neighbor with a voice. Like I said, Blaine has been my home for 17 years, and it is a place that we've raised two children, involved with many aspects of the community. It's nice to have a different set of eyes looking at the city. I also push that I work for another city, so maybe some things that we do in another municipality can also work in Blaine. Basically, I'm just, I'm just an average neighbor that wants a chance to represent the city I call home.
If you were elected, how would you communicate with citizens? Citizens expect to be able to communicate with their council, with their city staff. How would you communicate to your constituents if you were elected?
Social media is a huge thing nowadays. Social media, I would continue to use social media to communicate to the residents. Email, we're in the cyber age. Open door policy, I'm available for anything that you may need. Maybe neighborhood commissions would be another great thing. Since I believe Blaine is such a community-driven city, it'd be nice to set up commissions so individuals can see future problems or problems that we have within our city. So it would be a nice avenue to get more residents involved within the city.
Blaine is looking at asking residents if they think now is the time to build a community center in the city? What are some of your thoughts on a potential community center for the city of Blaine, and is it something that you would support?
Community centers are a great thing. We've used them. I have two small children, so obviously, we use them a lot. I think it brings a lot to the city to have a community center. You would have to look at the financial situation, what you'd have to cut out in order to build a community center. Community centers, like I said, they add a lot to a city. You just have to look at the long-term plan. Personally, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to a community center, but I just would make sure that no funding for any other project that would be necessary for the city would be cut in order to put a community center in.
Okay. How would you work to build unity in the city?
Unity in the city, as a leader, you are to work together. We're all hired, and we all can be fired by the residents that put us in a position to be the voice for the neighbors. Work well with others. It's not your agenda, it's the agenda of the constituents, it's the people you represent.
Why should someone vote for you?
Because I'm new, because I have a vision, because I love my city. It is a place that I call home. It is a place that we've raised our two children. I have an autistic child, and the community's been so great with us for that. There's all sorts of programs that the city of Blaine has. The Blaine Safety Camp was a big one for a child that has a learning disability. That's a great, great program for any youth to go through. I would love the opportunity to serve the community. It would be an honor to serve the residents of Ward 1.
Well, John, thank you for taking some time today, coming in and sharing your thoughts with us. Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you so much.
All right. I want to remind you that you can always head to northmetrotv.com for our complete Local Decision 2016 coverage. There, we have candidate spotlights, candidate biographies. It's all available there for you on northmetrotv.com. And we'll continue to follow the elections through the primary and then all the way through to the general election as well. I've been your host, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching. Thank you for joining us for this Local Decision 2016 Candidate Spotlight. I'm Ben Hale, sitting down with Andy Clint, who's running in the primary election in Blaine City Council, Ward 1. Andy, thanks for being here today. I'm looking forward to our conversation.
Thank you, Ben.
Well, I just want to start by giving you a chance to introduce yourself to the voters and to our viewers, and then explain to me why you decided to run for office.
Okay. Well, my name is Andy Clint, like you said, and I'm running for Blaine City Council in the Ward 1 district. And one of the reasons why I am, or excuse me, a little bit about myself, is that I grew up in Coon Rapids. I was born and raised in Coon Rapids, went to Epiphany Elementary School, and then on to Totino Grace High School as well. After that, I moved around quite a bit. I lived down in Arizona for a while as a golf professional, came back and worked for my father's companies here, Midwest Disability, which is a law firm based in Coon Rapids. And so, you know, Coon Rapids, Blaine area has always been, you know, a part of me. So that's one of the reasons, or that's a little bit about me. One of the reasons why I wanted to run for city council was because my mother has actually been on the city council of Coon Rapids for well over a decade. And what that really showed, it showed what a compassionate person like herself can really do for a city. And I feel like what this city really needs is somebody who will stand up for them, stand behind them, and advocate for them. I just don't feel like we have that in our current representation in Ward 1 right now. And I really want to make sure that there is somebody for our community, where an outlet, someone who will work for them and be a service leader in the community.
Tell me, if you're elected, what do you hope to accomplish? Do you have goals in mind, things you want to get done if you happen to win the election?
Yes, there are a few different things. One of the main reasons why I decided to run for city council was just to, it didn't really seem like there was that outlet for communities, someone who could stand behind them. But after really thinking about Blaine and what I want to accomplish with Blaine, a few things come to mind. One are, you know, kind of like what the three pillars are that I stand behind. The first, the first one is safety. Obviously, safety is very important to this community. We've had some safety incidents in and around Blaine, especially within this past year that has brought some spotlight to the city. But, so, safety is definitely the number one important. So making sure that our city is safe, our streets are safe. And one thing that I would like to do to help build safety is to actually create like a community, or a business, a business and community leadership fund. And what that does is, that brings business owners around Blaine together to actually work together and build funds for city leaders where we can support them. So for instance, if, you know, say for instance, a police officer in Blaine, you know, needs some new equipment and they've gone above and beyond, well, it's not in the budget in our city to be able to pay for that. Therefore, if we were able to create a fund with business leaders around Blaine, we can help recuperate some of those costs for them. And what that will do, that will really bring our community together, showing that we are, we stand behind our police force, we stand behind our leaders of our city. And what that will do is help create a safer, better place for city residents. The other one is resources, resources and amenities. Behind those two, I really think that right now, we have a chance to build a city center, a community center that we're looking to in Blaine. But I want to make sure that we have the right partner in place before moving forward. Because it's just not the cost of building the city, the community center, it's also the ongoing costs that are going to be contributed to that. So with that, making sure that we have the right partner in place before we move forward. I think what we're doing right now is, we're kind of just getting ahead of ourselves. We need to get this done, we need to get this done. We don't. We can sit back, make sure we have a strong relationship, so that we can be able to give back to our community. All right? And the amenities, resources, making sure that we are, especially in Ward 1, it's kind of, we feel like, after speaking to the residents in our community, is that businesses are moving out, small businesses are moving out, moving up north to the north part of Blaine, where all the development is going on. Making sure that we're rebuilding our area, you know, with small businesses, local businesses. What really built Blaine is Ward 1. So making sure that we are giving back to our residents by supporting small, local businesses and help rebuilding Ward 1. And the third one is education, the three pillars. Now, education is very important, all right? One thing that I would like to do, and I really am confident in making this happen, with getting the correct funding in place, is to be able to offer free education to Blaine area high school students. So what that is, is that offering free education for either to NOKA Ramsey Community College or NOKA Hennepin Technical College. After graduation, Blaine would be able to pay for education for a two-year degree from one of those two universities. What that will do is, that will help our, help our children, our kids grow, and give them an opportunity to go to college. We're not necessarily be able to pay for college, it'll give them a fresh head start moving forward. I know that there's a lot of speculation behind the free education movement, but there are a lot of communities all across the United States have, who are doing this, and what they're seeing is, they're seeing a less crime rate in the area, they're also seeing home values increase, and they're also seeing a community forming together to help build and prosper in this economy.
Couple of things that you mentioned that I just want to follow up on. You mentioned finding the right partner for the community center project.
Correct.
Who's that right partner? Do you know, do you have an idea? Is it the YMCA? Is it someone else? Who is the right partner there?
You know, I don't know who the right partner is. You know, there is the YMCA, there's also Lifetime Fitness, you know, there's other areas that I would like to be able to explore. For instance, we have, we have the Blaine Sports Center, the soccer complex there. Another person who, or another area where I would like to look into is possible USA Soccer, seeing if there's something that can be done around that campus where we can do a city, a city community center based around a soccer, a soccer stance. So for instance, with USA Soccer, training facilities, those sort of things, workout facilities. Also, the most important is community centers for our residents, making sure that our residents have rooms available, making sure that they have access, available amenities that will bring us forward, and set the bar for other cities to look, to look at.
And then following up on your idea of free education at the local community and technical colleges, have you looked into the cost of that, how that impacts the city budget, where that, where those funds are drawn from?
Yeah, I looked into it briefly. It's, where those funds are drawn from is mainly donations, excuse me, different scholarships from different businesses, but also it's starting, it has to do with the city as well. There's also programs that with the colleges, colleges can offer discounted rates for cities who are doing this sort of thing. So for instance, what is called is PROMISE, the PROMISE Project. So there's areas to look at to make sure that the funding is available and that we could move forward this. But the biggest thing about the free education is there's going to be stipulate, there would have to be stipulations on it. It wouldn't just be everyone, you know, free college for everyone. There'd have to be stipulations, grade point average coming out of high school, grade point average, you know, while attending the college, making sure that levels are met. And that's one thing, as a, you know, at where I work for, is that what we do, we offer free education. Free education for all employees, which is included while working for my company. So I think that it's really big, it brings a community together, it brings people together, and it really enriches everyone's lives.
If you were elected, how would you communicate with your constituents? And also, how would you work to build unity with your constituents? Because they're not all going to vote for you if you're elected.
They're not all going to vote for me. But one thing I want to point out is that I am getting out and speaking to every single person in my ward. I have already accomplished about 60% of my ward before the primary. I have gone out and door knocked, I have not, I have not solicited help from any of my friends, family. I have done everything myself. Every single day, I dedicate two hours to going out and knocking on doors, learning what the issues are with our community, meeting our community, and, you know, trying to work together. Like I said in the beginning, I want to make sure that our community, Ward 1 and Blaine, has somebody who they can count on, somebody who they can reach out to and advocate for them. And they're not going to find that in someone who does not come out and speak to them directly. And so, making sure that by doing that is, you can't make everyone happy. Everyone's not going to vote for you. But what you need is, you need someone who they can trust, someone who they can rely on. And I want to let the people know that I am there for you, and that I will advocate for your needs.
All right. Well, thank you for taking some time today, coming in, chatting with us a little bit, and letting our viewers learn a little bit more about who you are and why you're running for office. So thank you for doing that, Andy.
All right, thank you.
I want to thank you all for watching this candidate spotlight. Remember, you can head to northmetrotv.com where you can see, read and hear more from the candidates. We have all these candidate spotlights posted on there, as well as candidate biographies that candidates were invited to submit to our website as well. Remember, we'll have all of your elections... Remember, we'll have all of your election results, both for the primary election and then again in November for the general election, on northmetrotv.com, as well as on our social media channels. I've been your host, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching.